I will call the committee of the whole meeting for the city of Verona to order. We'll start with the roll call, please.
Alderson Diaz?
Here, although I will have to leave in a little bit to go to an EMS commission subcommittee meeting, so just FYI.
Alderson Doyle?
Here.
Alderson Steiner?
Here.
Alderson McGilray?
Here.
Alderson Ricky?
Here.
Alderson Touche?
Present.
Alderson Linder?
Here.
Alderson Gaskell?
Here.
I will say here as well, so the mayor's part of the committee of the hall, so we have everyone here, thank you. Next, we have public comment, anyone from the public that wishes to speak? I'm not seeing anyone in the seats, so we will move to approval of minutes from the January 30th, 2017 Committee of the Hall meeting. Those minutes were included with your packet, what's your pleasure?
I move approval.
We have a motion by Ms. Ricky, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Doyle. Any additions or corrections to the minutes of the previous meeting of the committee of the hall? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, no. That motion carries. So we are on to the presentation of the proposed 2018 city budget. Mr. McCorskey, please.
Great, thank you. Okay. Well, I'll take this opportunity to thank you and I get the privilege to present the second city of Verona budget, mayor's budget. Last year being a short year for me, this is the first year that I've had a full approach for the budget. And I also want to thank Brian Lammers and his staff. This is Brian's first budget with the city of Verona, although he's had a lot of other budgets prior to that. Appreciate his help and attention to the details for the first year. Go ahead and get started. On the first page, you'll notice I've been placing this wherever I can because it should be something that we should take pride in. 2017, best place to raise a family in Wisconsin, and you'll continue to see that throughout the year, as anywhere we can promote that, we will. Verona's growing, population has continued to increase, 16 percent change from 2010, we're up to 12,303. These are Wisconsin population estimates. The US Census Bureau has us a little bit higher, but I do believe they're pulling in a little bit of areas that are not Verona, to the north of us. We're working to clarify or get an understanding why their estimates are a little bit higher than Wisconsin's. But as you see, the population continues to grow, and with developments like the Kettle Creek North, Cathedral Points Phase 7 and 8, Cross Point Estates, Hometown Grove, and the upcoming North Neighborhood, these numbers are only going to get larger. So we're gonna... With all those developments of single-family houses and other multifamily houses, our population will continue to grow. As far as equalized value, it is also continuing to grow. We show a 11... over 11 percent increase in non-TIF, I'll show you that in a little bit. But in front of you is the equalized value for properties with TID, with tax increment districts and without tax increment districts. And you'll notice between the years 2015 and 2016, the without-tax increment district has shot up tremendously. That's the closure of the TIF District Number 7, so that now the equalized values both in and out are a lot closer. But we are showing both increases in both categories. And this shows you over... since 2010, how the non-TIF equalized value's been growing. Again, the 2016 is an anomaly because of the TIF closure and the large value of... equalized value that's in... that was in that TIF District. But in 2017, we've grown 11.8 percent, which is a very good growth for non-TID districts. And that shows the... a good portion of that is net new construction. A few highlights of the 2018 proposed budget. Cease tax rates proposed to be reduced, 4.32 percent, going down to 5.7744 per thousand dollars of assessed value. This proposed budget qualifies for the state expend... excuse me, expenditure restraint program. The 2017 did not, again due to the closure of the TIF District, but this budget will. It also meets the municipal levy limit. It... As far as personnel and services, we've been able to add three full-time personnel, police officer position, senior case manager position, public works inspector, and able to provide funding for Sunday hours for the library. In addition, we're continuing to reduce the debt borrowing by maintaining a levy funding for a street program at least 50 percent. We're continuing to fund capital projects with levy funds. This year, this proposed budget has 1,307,000 toward capital projects. Those capital projects include, and this is just a few of them, finance software upgrade, the street maintenance, and senior center office remodeling. We're also continuing to fund a public safety and police and Parks Department replacement equipment programs. That helps to take care of equipment so that it doesn't get to the point where we have to bond for those pieces of equipment. We can pay through the replacement fund. Also, we're continuing the facility replacement program. Again, if a facility has a problem with a HVAC system, we don't have to go and bond for it. This replacement program will allow for facility improvements between... without having to bond. We're also providing a 3 percent cost of living for employees. Now, that's non-represented employees. The... both represented categories, both police and fire, also are receiving a cost of living increase of 3 percent this year, so all employees, if this budget is approved, will have a 3 percent cost of living this year. Other highlights, we're putting $5,000 toward a network cybersecurity assessment, working with CivMec, our insurance carrier. They are... they have a grant program and they're working with a vendor, and we hope to take advantage of that this year. It's... once again, upgrading financial software. The total financial software is split up between 82,000 for levy, 37,500 water utility, 30,000 sewer utility, and 7,500 for stormwater. The finance program is the main program that bills and receives monies... receives collections for all the utilities. So it's a key piece of software that is time to upgrade and modify, make more efficient use. Right now, the one we have, I think we've just outgrown, it doesn't have a lot of features that we need to continue to be efficient as a workforce. Other budget highlights include $20,000 contribution, again, to the Badger Prairie Needs Network, and again, $5,000 to the Verona Road Business Coalition. Putting together the budget, we have to pay attention to the municipal levy limit, so I thought I'd provide some information as far as how that is calculated. In 2016, our levy was 13,008... Last year, we provided a debt adjustment that increases the levy... or increases the levy limit last year because we had a lot of one-time monies and a lot of projects before you last year. Any adjustment that's provided as a part of the budget to increase the levy limit gets adjusted the following year, so that same amount gets reduced before... for the 2018 budget. And that's the $12,395,000 number. Net new construction, because we had such great increase in construction, that was able to increase the levy limit by $933,000, providing our allowable levit... allowable levy limit of $13,329,373. That's a 1.86 percent increase from last year. Any amount above this, again, would be considered an adjustment, and it would reduce next year's levy limit by that same number. Talking about the tax levy, it's not just the general fund, there's a lot of components to the tax levy. General fund is just a portion of that. You also have library operations, debt service, refuse and recycling, senior center, forestry, fire department, FTRON EMS. All those are components that come together to create the overall tax levy for the city. Again, we've... our 1.86 percent increase amounts to about $243,000 in increase in levy that we took advantage to improve personnel and services for the city. Breakdown of the levy, of course, the general fund is the biggest portion of it, it's 38 percent. Debt service is about 27 percent. Then you'll see the smaller portions, library, the fire department, capital improvements around 10 percent. This is a pie chart that you've probably seen every year regarding the levy. I thought I'd try to take a look at... a way to look at the levy a little bit differently. So if the levy was a dollar, 38 cents of the dollar would be the general fund, 27 cents is debt service. That's something we need to pay attention to. Then capital improvements, fire department, then the smaller portions go to library, EMS, senior center. Felt there's a little bit better graphic to show how much is going to each of the portions of the levy. As far as the general fund, it's the biggest part of the levy. Majority of the taxes are property taxes. Then you've got the tax equivalents, which are utilities paying a payment in lieu of taxes, intergovernmental revenues, that's state aid, licenses and permits, and various smaller portions of the revenue. Altogether, $8.6 million for revenues of the general fund. A couple notes on the non-property tax revenues. The state revenues did reduce. Overall, there's a reduction of 2.65 percent, about $32,000. But that's actually pretty good because we didn't get the expenditure restraint program last year, which was roughly $200,000. So other state aids were increased, notably the highway aid, which increased 14 percent, up to $866,000. That helped reduce that negative of state aid. This proposal... this proposed budget, if it qualifies, will be looking at roughly $200,000 in the 2019 budget for state aid.
Jeff, on the... Sorry, on the highway aids, part of the reason that we have that increase is because we spent more money in that rolling average the years.
That's correct.
The way the calculation works. So it's not just because the state decided to give us 14.75 percent more, it's because we expended more dollars, therefore we're getting more dollars.
Right, we're putting more money into the roads.
Right.
That's correct. Again, the payment in lieu of taxes went up 3.45 percent, up to $750,000. And building permits and fees were increasing 84 percent. 2017 was kind of a strange year. A lot of our permits came in in 2016, the projects were being constructed 2017, so we had a high permit in 2016, not too much in 2017. We now have projects that are finishing up, and a lot of projects that are approved or waiting to be approved for next year's construction. So 2018, again, will have a high building permit fee increase because of those projects that are coming online. Expenditures for the general fund, the biggest portion, public safety, is police and fire alongside public works, those are the main programs. General government, 13 percent. Then parks and rec, down to 11 percent development. And general fund transfers, which is... we're utilizing some fund balance to offset increased debt need. And interfund transfers, which is hydrant rentals. So as far as the proposed budget, the summary, our property levy tax is 13.3 million, it's an increase of 1.86 percent. The estimated cities portion of the mill rate, again, there's a lot of other jurisdictions that are included into the bill, but the cities portion will be reduced by 4.32 percent. That equals $5.77 per thousand dollars of assessed value. That comes out to, on a $282,000 home, about a reduction of $73. On a $400,000 home, it's about $104. Looking at the tax rate over time, this is the third reduction in property taxes over the last four years, or you can say it's the fourth year without an increase in property taxes. We've gone down to the proposed 5.77, and that's far below the 2010 level that we were close to last year. Again, it's the growth in the city that's allowing us to increase personnel, increase services, and reduce property taxes. Looking at the 26... 2016 tax year with all the other... the cities, our proposed 2017 tax year at 5.77 would be the lowest. Now, all these other cities are going through their budget process, and they didn't want to include some that have been approved, some not, so I kind of just used it as a guide that those were the previous year's values for the other cities. But it shows that we are providing a better service per dollar to our residents, not taking as much. Proposed personnel changes, adding the police officer position, roughly $88,000. Senior center, the caseworkers, roughly $61,000. Public works inspector, roughly $92,000. And roughly $66,000 for the Sunday hours for the library service.
Jeff, before you go on, on the public works position?
Yes.
This one, we actually believe, rather than costing the city $92,000, will save the city money.
That's correct.
Because we'll be having less contracted service.
That's correct. And those contracted services are put into the bond because it's a part of the overall project. So we should be able to reduce our bond projects because of the increase... or the added employee. So another way of reducing down the debt.
Go ahead, Evan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just chairing the public works committee, I've talked with Aaron quite a bit about this. We actually think we'll be saving money in the long run as a city because what we... the work we're having done will be in much better condition because of this inspector. So this is more than just contract services. I think... I can think of the library parking lot as a great example. That could have been avoided if it was inspected properly, so.
As far as the capital projects, they fall into a couple different categories. This is capital projects that we're paying for through the levy and through fund balance. Again, the finance software, server upgrades, we're going up on five years on some of our servers that we need to replace. Library is replacing some lighting with LED lighting and remodeling. Mill and overlay, we're putting over $500,000 of levy into the program. We're using $200,000 from fund balance, so we're reducing the need to borrow substantially for the mill and overlay program. Parks, we're replacing a structure, improving a trail, and purchasing land near the Fireman's Police were adding equipment, and again, that's through fund balance. EMS, we're paying for a power cot replacement. Fire, a number of pieces of equipment, from traffic preemption to ballistic protection. Also doing interior remodeling for the senior center. Yes?
Jeff, do you think maybe the... that's showing up twice? I'm just curious about that. Under the library, we've got senior remodeling for 36, and then interior remodeling under senior center for 36? Is that possible?
Yeah, that's the same, yes. I don't know how that popped up there, but yes, that's the same thing. As far as the replacement levy, we're continuing to put levy funds to the replacement programs. For public works and parks, it's 220,000. Public safety, 110,000. The other facilities, senior center, library, and city hall, 100,000. And public works facility, 80,000. All told, we're putting $1,307,000 into capital levy or replacement funds. That leaves the general borrowing portion of the capital budget. The biggest one of all will be if we're continuing to move toward a new public works facility. We have 2.5 million set aside for purchasing land. The two traffic transportation projects, County PD from Woods Road to County M, will be borrowing 1.5 million dollars for that. The County M-PD intersection, that project will be starting with utilities, that's 1.47 million. We've got two... well, we got a bridge replacement and old PB. We're going to be borrowing 193,000, but it's a $470,000 project. We're working with Dane County and State to match grants. We've got 80,000 set aside for pool acquisition. When we locate a place where the public pool may be located, those ones would be available. Wheeloder, and then Legion Street at West Verona, that's a TIF project that the TIF funds will be repaying us, but $850,000 for road and traffic replacement. The general borrowing, these numbers may change as we move through the... through the year to the time where we're actually buying the bonds. So there's estimated numbers, the true numbers will be what we borrow at the time of the bond purchase, which is usually in May, April or May.
So Jeff, what you're saying is that these are placeholders?
That's correct.
So by approving the budget, we put them in as placeholders, but the actual voting on this borrowing will happen when we need the money.
That's correct.
Which typically, we do the bonding in June, so.
June, okay.
Thank you. Just a few questions. So with the latest developments regarding the public works facility land acquisition, and the same for the pool, do we still want those in as placeholders, or are there any recommendations to adjust those amounts or the timelines for those?
I think right now, although we don't have locations set aside, it gives us some flexibility to look at properties. Again, it's a placeholder, it's not going to have an impact on the general fund or the debt limit... I'm sorry, the levy limit. But it provides some flexibility in looking at properties between now and the time that we sell the bonds. So I would recommend we keep these in, just for that ability to do that.
and I would just add, with the understanding is that there's a lot more discussion that will have to occur.
Right. And then with the pool specifically, does any of that reflect the carryover from the funds that we set aside for the Fireman's Park improvements that we said were kind of for an aquatic feature?
No, that's separate. That money's still set aside. This is additional money that we're looking at specifically for land purchase.
Okay. And just one more to add to just kind of capital budgeting for proposed projects. I know I've brought this up before, but just wanted to make sure we had an explanation for why there wasn't any money set aside for any street improvements in relation to the high school?
I think because those issues have yet to be resolved and negotiated, I think until that occurs, it'd be hard for us to put a number in. So I think even though it's not within the budget fund... So I think even though it's not within the, the budget fund, that's still available. If council moves to do that, it can add that to the, to the budget, to the capital budget and be available for bond purchasing next year.
Okay. Just for the sake of information, it, it might be helpful to at least include some sort of estimate because especially if essentially the public works facility land price and as well as the public pool land acquisition, we don't have really sites for either right now. So essentially those are just placeholders. So if we're going to include those, it might be helpful to just have something in there for a road as well or just some sort of estimate.
Mr. McGilvery?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I was just going to ask along the same lines with the, the pool and the question about previous monies that we set aside last year's budget, what is that total at now? And, and could we have that as part of? I'd like to have it like just as a public discussion point moving into the next meeting so that the public knows what that amount is, what has been set aside.
I do believe all told from different sources is 1.25 million.
Including the 800,000?
No.
Okay. So we're up to two.
That's correct.
Two, 2.5. Thank you.
I thought we had set aside more than that last year from the epic money, the one-time closure money.
Well, it's not to put anybody on the spot, I, I would just like it for just, so we have that at the next meeting?
Yeah. I, I thought we set aside, if I remember right, either 2.6 or 2.8 million, and we called it for an aquatic feature.
That's correct. All sources, that's correct. The, all sources together is 2.6. The 1.25, I think was from, from the TIF 7. I think that's.
So the, just so that we know that that 2.6 million is already there. We don't have to borrow for it.
Three-four.
Because we, we pulled it from, we designated it from the one-time epic TIF money.
So.
Go ahead.
For the sake of clarity and public record, we are now talking about if this budget is adopted and this capital budget, general borrowing, we'd be talking about having 3.4 moving forward.
Total, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead, Jeff.
The other bigger issue with the, with the budget, we need to take a look at debt service. Total debt service for 2018 will be a little over $7 million. Of that 7 million, 1.4 is reimbursed back through TIF districts, about a million through water sewer and stormwater. That leaves the debt service levy about 3.9 million. Other funds that offset the, the debt service are impact fees. Police, fire, and library impact fees are collected to, to pay off facilities that have been created in the past. And then there's a various number of other sources that go into the, the debt service For 2018 specifically, we've got the general obligation debt of 51,168,566. Two levels of debt margin. The state allows 5% of the total equalized value. The city's policy is a little more restrictive at 3.75% of the equalized value. If you're looking just at the, the cities, that's which is more restrictive, that leaves 48,950,000 available, or we've utilized 51.11%. Looking back throughout the, the years from 2010, the blue line is general obligation debt and the red is the city policies allowable debt. You'll see that the percentages throughout that time are, are consistent within the 50s. Actually, 51% is lower than the previous, some of the previous years. But as our assessed value continues to increase, the allowable amount goes up. But as you saw, the, the debt service is over $7 million. We need to, to make sure we keep that in check as we move forward. Fund balance projections, 2018 will be using $200,000 of our fund balance. So that leaves about 39% of the, it leaves us with 39% of the general fund available in the fund balance. We've kept it a little bit higher than the range that, that's likely, knowing that there's projects coming up next year that, that may utilize some of these funds. Projects like the EMS increase in service and, and, and other projects. So the 2018 fund balance is roughly 39%. And that's consistent with previous years similar to 2012.
Go ahead, Mr. McGilvery.
Jeff, do you have a ballpark number of what those future expenditures are that you're, you're thinking about earmarking out of here?
I think it's about $100,000 or $200,000 would take us into the, back into the range. So it's roughly between 100,000 and 200,000.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Brian. Brian, use your mic, please.
Keep in mind with your 2018 budget, you're also increasing expenditures. So the fund balance, 35% of that is going to, you're going to have to reserve more. So we're kind of looking ahead also at that.
Thank you.
It's the same every year. We, we don't ever seem to spend less.
Go ahead, Jeff.
With that, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Question, Ms. Doyle, please.
Thank you. I'd just like to say first and foremost, I'm, I'm really appreciative to all the staff and, you know, everyone else who serves on the finance committee. We all put a lot of time into this and all the different department heads, so appreciate that. And would like to say that I'm glad to see a 3% across the board COLA. I try to advocate for that every year because I think it's important to stay in line with our compensation study and make sure that we're staying competitive and rewarding our, our employees fairly for their continued service and the great work that they do. I'm also glad to see the contribution for Badger Prairie Needs Network continued in this budget. They're a fantastic organization that provides a really beneficial service for our residents. I know that there's countless seniors that rely on those services and, and I know in talking with folks over at the senior center, there, there is a constant need and it's almost more about convincing seniors to utilize those needed services instead of going without food. So glad to see that continued support in this budget. One question that I did have additionally was in regard to the increase in the money calculated by the Dane County Library Board and just wanted to see was there a change in that formula? Is that why we didn't anticipate that expense or what, what happened with that?
Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, I meant to mention that the, because of the, the large increase in assessed value, their formula showed a, a very large increase in, in funding to the library. So it, we should have known that it was going to go up, but we didn't know how much until they showed our minimum funding level, which was roughly $300,000. And this, this late into the year, it would have been tough to find, find ways to, to cover that without cutting back on other departments. So that was the, the rationale for talking with the, the library board and seeing what other opportunities we could to stretch that large increase out. And also, it would have been hard to actually utilize $300,000 in one year for the library. The library director even said it would have been tough to find ways to, to, to use that money all at one time. So we felt working with the library board, the Dane County Library Board to, to spread that out and, and increase a little more naturally so that they can prepare and plan for that increase in funding.
I would just add to that is we, we had conversations, staff, and I had conversations with our library director, they had conversations at the library board meeting as well. And we, we believe that trying to spread that increase that we would be required to do over a three-year period would be very difficult for the city. So we, we met with them. We recommended that we do that over a five-year period. The library board was, the Dane County Library Board was very supportive of that because they, they understood the hardship. And then we also told them that before we would hit that three years, we would see another two TIFs closing. They're much smaller than what the epic TIFs are. So once that happens, that'll increase that minimum again that we're required to do. So to our knowledge, this has really only happened once before in the state of Wisconsin, never in Dane County. So what we did and the Dane County Library Board agreed is we now set the precedent and the standard for any time that this may happen again in the future. But go ahead.
It seemed like it was an unusual circumstance, but just wanted to double check that there weren't any other funding mechanisms that might have been affected by the increased in equalized value. Okay.
Not that we're aware of.
Not that we're aware of. Okay. Other questions, comments? Other questions or comments? One of the things that we did want to mention, and this would be consistent with what we did last year, is that so the staff has the opportunity, we would like if there's any amendments, that those amendments would come in by the end of the business day on Thursday. That would give the staff Friday and Monday if necessary to determine what the fiscal impact is. So Jeff, do you have a form that you'll be sending out?
I included that form with the, the information provided to council. We also provided copies in your boxes already, so you should, should have those. If you don't, let us know, we'll print up additional copies.
Any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Ms. Doyle.
An additional item that I brought up at finance committee is just in previous years, we've always had a few different options presented, at least at the committee level. And I think if recollection serves me, that's sometimes included during this presentation as well. But just where it would show the potential impact, if all department head requests were approved, then there's typically kind of a maybe oral and staff recommendation and then a finance committee recommendation. I find that that's kind of a useful tool for comparison's sake and just to get, you know, especially when sharing information with the public, just to get a sense of, of again, what the different needs and wants and evaluating that. So I don't know if there's any thoughts from the rest of the council or the finance committee regarding that, or if it's a practice we'd like to continue moving forward.
Let me, let me ask first, Jeff and, and Brian, how difficult would that be to put that together? I think you worked with the department heads and really most of the requests, I believe, have been met.
Yeah. That's the case. I think we did have quite a, the opportunity to, to fill a lot of the requests were met and we met the priorities of the, the finance committee. But we can, it wouldn't be a problem if we identified in coming years, different levels of, of funding.
Mr. McGilvery?
I was going to make the comment along those lines that this is a fairly rare air time that you're going to be able to meet all the requests and not have an increase and do some other pretty significant stuff. I, I think in the future, you're probably not going to be so lucky. So having those options again, you know, on the table would, would certainly be appropriate from my point of view.
Yeah. I think in the past, I'd agree with you, Ms. Doyle, we've always had those. But to my knowledge, most of the requests, if not all, were met. Go ahead, Brian.
I think you'll find a couple of things in the capital that were taken out, but that's about it. I think there was a couple of small items in the fire department and the intersection of Verona and Maine.
That's correct.
Was that $5 million that we didn't put in there? But otherwise, I think all the rest were.
Ms. Doyle?
Yeah. And I guess just to reiterate, you know, this is a very unique year, so just wanted to make sure we preserve those tools moving forward.
Thank you. I've had two unique years in a row, that's happy for that. If there are no other comments or questions, a motion to adjourn the committee, the whole would be in order.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Gasco.
If the list is that short, would it be a problem to send it around of what? It sounds like not everything was approved. So if the list is short, can we see that?
If, if you look at the capital, you'll actually see what the department requests were and then what was approved for the budget. The first line will show what, so you'll see that, I think there's three items.
Yeah.
That are in there.
I think if there were any other operating changes, there may be one or two, we can provide that list to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. A motion to adjourn would be in order? We have a motion by Ms. Riki, is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gasco. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. Motion carried and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Don't go way too far.